...in order at 6:15. I ask everyone, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands in our nation under our government, individual, and liberty and constitutional right.
After you.
Bless the flag. Democrats, we bless them to come by in the audience and also to come and give good business for the city. God bless them to make the right decisions. God bless them to be kind to their neighbors. Lead the way, the directors, and we go out there to play.
We've been seeing a lot of guys here tonight who conduct events through the city. I'd like to make that remember the council or president, the vice president, Councilor Lawrence and Councilor Dodd. The next item on the agenda is the approval of this, and I don't have any intentions of delaying their approval until...
Second.
...by Councilor Stroud, second by Councilor Hewitt. In discussion or questions, there are no follow-up questions, all in place. Let's carry it down and leave it to me on this approval. Approval of the minutes from the August 2, 2021 council meeting. The revised minutes were sent out to you in a product that this afternoon you put into the direction of the late night design today. Is there other approval of the...
Second.
Question by Councilor Stroud, second by Councilor Hewitt. Discussion, questions, decisions, beliefs, directions. There are no follow-up questions, all in place. Let's carry it down and leave it to me. Next item on the agenda is the decision, business here on quarterly to these, we build up the standard.
Thank you. Sure. So, part of my reason in being with you all this evening is to, of course, thank you for appointing Alondra Ochero and Tashar Patel to the CBB Authority. We now have a pool and very diverse and capable group. We've been busy, busy. You have our new adventure guide in front of you. Janice passed it out to you all a couple of weeks ago. If you have any questions or suggestions for the next revision, which I'll probably start working on here in about eight months, please share that with me. And as part of our marketing, we have a new series of commercials, and this is the first one in that group. This is the 32nd one, and it goes with our print and digital summer getaway and fall getaway campaigns. So, I'm sure you recognize a lot of local faces in here. This particular campaign is a little different than the last destination video. The last one was two and a half minutes, and it was definitely a destination video. These are more segmented and more focused to identify particular demographics or to speak to those demographics. The next one is a 90-second commercial, which will have more expanded look at some of the attractions to be added to that. And then we'll do a series of 15-second, which will be more hyper-focused, like on a particular attraction or restaurant. And we used drones with this one. We didn't do a voiceover. We maintained that relaxed, fun vibe, and it just keeps... The whole idea is just to keep it all working together so that nothing becomes overly dated or feels disjointed when you look at all of the videos. So, okay, moving on. As our audiences continue to grow organically through social media and website, there are lots of ways that we can measure... The two and a half minute one's on there. Well, it's a refresher.
That's the old one you're talking about. I thought you mentioned the nine and something.
It's coming. It's... It's in there.
I got it.
In fact, you will see, that has to be ready here in the next two weeks because it goes there for... So, there's lots of ways that we can measure our success, and some of the things that we do, like our travel leads, is one of those, is how people respond to the print and digital that we put out there and then look at it and say, "Hey, I want to learn more about you and come to us for our visitors' guides and all." And so, we are averaging about 400 of those a month, so we send those visitors' guides out to about 400 people. This summer, we added two new aspects to the campaign when we started working with Women's Day and Shape Magazine, again, looking at demographics, disposable income, who has interest, who travels, who makes the decision about travel. And in our fall campaign, we will add Martha Stewart's Living, and that's part of that, again, expanding that demographic, building upon knowledge that we have, and that's paid for with some of our recovery money, that grant that we just got. So, just remember that what we're doing is weaving our story together. None of this is scattershot. We're not just, you know, "Oh, if this works," or "Let's try that." No, this is all about knowing who our audience is, who our potential visitors are, and, you know, targeting those audiences. In doing so, probably people would argue that, you know, paid is the way to go, and it is in some ways, but we also try very hard to grow organically. And so, I have, when I have the opportunity to meet travel writers or influencers and all, I'm always ready to pitch my story and talk about my community and why they might, you know, want to be engaged with us. So, recently, we did have somebody who is coming, and she is coming, of course, over Labor Day weekend, and she is writing for Georgia Backroads, the magazine. I'm sure most of you have seen it at one time or another. And so, she will focus on, for Sonic, talk about good places to stay, things to do, but she's also, will talk about the history of the community. And of course, my pitch at the time was to tie it into the bicentennial. So, even though the publication will come out after the bicentennial celebration event, it's still an opportunity to make people aware about our community and what we have going on and why you want to come and stay. And so, she'll be here, like I said, Labor Day weekend, and I'll take her around. Our work continues with our tourism partners. Hamlin Hills getting ready to do a haunted corn maze, and Outback Club, which is one of our newest tourism partners, and I gave you their rack card. They have an ATV event space there in South Monroe County, as Hay would like to say, the forgotten parts of Monroe County. And it's the only place where you can rent one of their ATVs and ride their trails and do like that in the state of Georgia, at least reportedly. I'm amazed at how many people say, "Do they have big mud holes? Do... Can I, you know, can I go through?" So, you know, there's definitely a market for people who like to go through the mud and the dirt and splash and all those things. So, we're delighted to be able to work with them. Others that we've worked with are, you know, Meadows Farm Club, we just did with the Big Turkey Shoot, and Oak Moby Water Trail. I'm on them to include us. I've been on this for like two and a half years, but they will include us. Working with the bicentennial, working with Starbucks, things like that. One of the things that keeps coming up is people come to the Welcome Center and say, "Hi, I'm thinking about moving here," or, you know, "I am moving here," or people send people to the Welcome Center. And so, we got with this at the end with, through Main Street and with the Chamber, and said, "Let's kind of do our own hello neighbor thing." So, we've designed our sticker, and this is kind of a prototype of what it looks like. And we've chosen a bright yellow folder because we want it to be the thing you can see in that stack of papers, so you go, "Oh, yeah, that gets any yellow thing in it, you find it." It has things like the magazine that the Chamber and the reporter put out. We're doing, you know, revised important numbers, you know, have a letter from the mayor, and so we're putting it together. I think it is very attractive packaging, and we hope that, provided we have no more interruptions, that we'll be able to get that going here in the next couple of weeks. We've been focused on agritourism and getting the folks to do a fork-in-the-road television down here. I think definitely we'll get them here for rocking chair ranch and for Old Mill, and so we continue to work on that with Georgia Brown. And then, like recently, we had the regional opportunity to work with the Georgia National Fairground, Visit Perry, Visit Macon and all with the bikers roundup, and it is without... It was an experience, let me tell you. So, that was a whole lot of people loving their motorcycles, loving each other, out there, you know, tailgating, having a good time. Any excuse to hop on their motorcycle and ride down the fairway and come back, they did it. It was wonderful. I mean, there was a lot of great fellowship. I know that they were up here in our hotels and our KOA. It was good for, you know, our business in that respect, just like we had people with the Turkey Shoot. It is a Georgia-based organization, and I've been in touch with their leadership, and so maybe they can do a tractor rally or something like that because we're obviously a much, 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 much smaller venue, but it'd be nice. We continue to work on developing tourism products. We have two, and actually usually do it through grants, and so we have two kind of self-guided experiences in the works. And I'd like to end on the note of more good news. So, last year, our revenue was down 33.5%, and we, because we were CBB, were not eligible for any of the recovery money, any of those help. But this June was the best June hotel-motel revenue that we have ever had in the five years that we've been monitoring the revenue. It was higher. It was, for the CBB, it was $20,000, so that's our biggest June ever. Hopefully, July will reflect that as well. Anything else I need to add, Mr. Chairman? All right.
Good job, dear.
All right. Do y'all have any questions? I mean, I can stand here and talk about CBB for a long, long time, but I was told five minutes, and I'm out, so... All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming and talking to you all. Have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is to consider conditional use request of Kristen Morgan table at the August 2, 2021 meeting.
Yes, this was table that went to last meeting, and the next act, I tried to contact this Morgan, I was not able to contact her. The will process that I let you all just follow through, and so we get to the, we get this back to the table, and then dispose of the matter, so it is not, and they're sitting up there, and I'm going to sit on there.
Is there a motion to bring this issue back to the table when we can resolve?
I'm moved.
If, yeah, that here is taken back, and how, we discuss it, or what? There are no follow-up questions, all in place. I think Chris asked off the...
Go ahead. Go on. What's the... That didn't get it back on site.
Okay. Let's carry it down. All right. Now, I mean, most of you related to this matter are in order, and it is back on the table.
I have questions for Bobby. I see, man. Now, how do we dispose of this?
Well, you've got an application.
Maybe just deny it or...
Yeah. I got it. Put it on the side.
Okay. I know that's something special, but...
I was just going to say, you brought your report back, and I'm sorry.
If you deny it, and she still decides to do it to five minutes or a forty company and that location, she would still make this a bid, and then combine it.
I'm not going to do that.
So, will it be by Councilor Hewitt to deny, second by Councilor Stroud? Do you have some questions related to what is to deny to the report?
Yes. Hey, I think that somebody, I can't remember the neighbor's name that you brought up. They bring up a good one, and we do have a house in Florida here, and we don't want to start a precedent in all neighborhoods when we just start, you know, whatever type of business in any neighborhood. I think that we do need to take the integrity of our neighborhoods. I definitely would like for us to make sure that we do that from here forward.
Your behalf, Governor. The Bucks of Florida, our resident.
Good.
What I was told, anyway.
All right. Any other discussion or question? There are no follow-up questions, all in place. Let's carry it, you have it, please, and those questions tonight, and we're out of this disposal. Next item on the agenda is approval of temporary permits for sale of alcohol and evidence by the Woodshop and Static Studios on September 16, 2021. I would like to say, I've been contacted by the old one, and I think Lady Miss Hall has been through that since you. They wanted to make clear that they are not selling alcohol, but they still have to get the permit, temporary alcohol sales permit. They're going to be giving it to their customers, invitation only at this time. They wanted to make it clear, they, they're a medical practice, they won't give the idea of selling alcohol.
So, then they could be the catering class, you know?
Well, the thing is, going down, you take alcohol, you take a break, and you're buying something, it can be, it's a law, sell alcohol. Now, even though you didn't buy alcohol, you, if you break it, you buy it, you pay for a certain, it can, it can, it can, I know, it's not free, though.
You know, man, I don't understand the difference between that and a catering class.
Yeah. They just want to play their country, though.
It's catering license, you actually have an alcohol license, and you're taking alcohol to a location, you have alcohol, and you take it to a level of location, you have an alcohol license. Rich used to have a catering license, they had an alcohol license at their locations, and they had a catering license to protect that alcohol, but then they're separate for it, and they have to submit to it for the paper loss for each event and for the state. With this, it's just a one-day, they purchased alcohol, and they are going to provide alcohol at a one-day special demand invitation homeless. And actually, if I may, all of our businesses should be removing it. We do have some businesses that are providing alcohol that should not be providing alcohol. And our majority of these businesses, it's supposed to have a license. But even if they have to stay shop, a shop event, and you put in, and even if you buy something or you don't buy something, if you're providing alcohol, that business is supposed to have a license, like if you try to provide alcohol. Our board has said that it's providing alcohol, but that's not a license.
All right. With that said, is there a motion? Either one of them. Second, a motion by Councilor Goozey, second by Councilor Stroud to approve the temporary permits from the Woodshop. Any discussion or questions? There are no follow-up questions, all in place. Most of you carried unanimously, and it is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the street sponsor request of Yes Stevens on October 3, 2021.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said, like, the life chain.
On our next one?
The life chain. The name of the company is The Life Chain, and the application is submitted by Yes Stevens. Is there an annual grant that The Life Chain hold? They will be here Sunday, October 3, 2:30 to 3:00 p.m. They will not walk the sidewalk completely. If there's any, if you're standing on the sidewalk, you somehow need to be by, they always need to come out of the way. She said there would be at least ten foot from each portion that you stand on the sidewalk. They do have signs that they pull up, and that's why I suggested the group did this question. And... Is it coming? Let's... She said there would be about 50 people, there'd be about 50 people, thus far, they have DVD and TV, and they're down to a little 50.
Is there a motion? So, by Councilor Stroud to approve, second by Councilor Goozey, any discussion or questions related to the question? There are none, I call the question, all in place. Let's carry unanimously, so for the next item on the agenda, is the approval of street sponsor requests of Sarah Williams on September 30, 2021.
This is where the Mary Crosses High School pump comes in the way. It will start at 5:00 o'clock, you have to continue until 2:00 or 3:00. They will have the same lap that they've had the last couple of years when they're planning to start at the high school. Now, not through the road to Lee Street, you want to get to Main Street, you'll take a left and go around the square, and then as Lee and Johnson, they will continue on Johnson Street down to Benet, Brown Bennett, and then again at the water station, Park Lot.
All right. Is there a motion? That's by Councilor Hewitt, second by Councilor Goozey, second by Councilor Hewitt, any discussion or questions? There are no follow-up questions, all in place. Here is unanimously, so for the next item on the agenda is the Senate, Tennessee, military flight.
You have a sheet that there is following me that is the spreadsheet that I do each year. The first sheet starts at 2014, and you achieve the property tax from mouse, and then with the village rate that was in 2014, and then comes through, and I've looked the assumption of looking at three meals. The other, the next sheet tells you what the village rate would be in a certain different scenario, starting at 3.75 meals, going down to 1.75 meals as to what does the district announce would be at three meals. We would, if we could like to tax on everything that is shown on the schedule for now, it would be 395,608, which is about a 30,000 or 40,000 dollar increase from the estimate from last year. And your village rate, you set a sensitive village rate, you cannot increase that advertised village rate, but you can decrease it at a public hearing. And I asked you, you said the public hearing was September the 7th, during our regular council meeting.
All right. Is there a motion related to the military?
Only make a motion that we leave the military at 3%? Have we, you said we need to have a, what you call it?
To adopt it, a public hearing on September 7th.
What she said?
Three meals, and to adopt it at the September 7th. Second, Councilor, second by Councilor Hewitt, any discussion or questions related to the motion?
I don't have a problem with, I said that three, but honestly, I will say, considering what the county's doing, it wouldn't bother me if we went down, but if, only if we could vote, but I would never say go up.
That's a good point. I think we can, we could go down, but financially, I think, still, you may not like that.
Look, I don't... You guys took it like, like, so long, we visited it for special projects.
We only use it for, I mean, whatever amount is in there, we use for special projects, so we've been dedicating those to recreation, to the Spice Path, to, in the future, hopefully to revitalizing parks, which is a $5 million project, so... Just remember, just remember that we can't, we can't go above that. So, if we set it at three tonight, that just means that we're not raising it, but we still have an opportunity to do that even more on September 7th, so...
I believe we can vote, and I think we can take that, I think we can vote, I think we can vote, I think we can have it.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? There are none, I call the question, all in place. Let's carry unanimously, so approved. The maximum rates would be the same as it is at three meals, and you can always, so... All right. The next item on the agenda is Walter Gibson's complaint. I think this kid was watching the field area.
He decided to leave and asked if we could put on the next council meeting.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of requisitions greater than $5,000, of which there are two listed, one to Fisher Scientific in the amount of $16,810, $10, and one to Sullivan Corporation in the amount of $7,460. Is there a motion to approve one of both of those invoices?
So, whether he's a vote in or...
That's by Councilor Hewitt, second by Councilor Stroud, any discussion or questions related to this?
Those are for the high school, the KDA, to separate the apparatus, divide two here until we can replace all of them. And that is, that is the motion I have. The others were 10, 25 KDA transformers, and those are the ones that we use the most, and we're down to one on the yard.
All right. Have motion and second. Any other discussions related to that motion? There are none, I call the question, all in place. Motion carried unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's report.
I have a couple of things, if there's any questions that you have, I'm calling the reports that I sent out to you. We want to point out a couple of things. Our partners are on standby because of the possibility of songs coming through. Just received a text message, I told the meeting started, that we will have high events, or potentially have high events tonight, so we could have some streets coming down. We have the commercial projects, the commercial projects that I've listed in here. We do have several other people, I actually had another potential business coming in today to discuss some expansion to their business. Public hearings that will be coming forward, we have to introduce the hook of hotel tags relating to the also Greek Saturday team, and then Avenue 3, Avenue 3, for the setback requirements, if someone is purchasing a portion of that, so that we'll be designing that parcel. The only other thing that's on the agenda, on our report, is last week was spent, nine and a half percent of our time was spent in the building, all the furnishings for all of the offices, like, then they're delivered to the building, the majority of that, the office desks are in the offices. A lot of the chairs are going to have to be moved around to do the detail I've worked to do. I will have a better understanding of the roof on Wednesday, that's where exactly they are. I know we said that tentatively that we'd like to have the first council meeting in September in the building, and I can let you know that that's going to be a possibility after we maybe, power construction maybe on Wednesday. They are working. Councilor Shager still has, has been doing a lot of intricate work, there's a lot of intricate work in that room, but other than that, just about everything is, is complete. We did have DC3 here today, configuring several new computers at several locations that we've not had before, just with having four type of windows. So, we have new computers, it's a... So we have new computers, it's, the phone probably will not be set up until next week, I was scheduled to come this week. So his child was tested positive, so he's, he's not able to come this week, so hopefully either next week or next, depending on the outcome of that. And other than that, we're just kind of waiting on this, this construction. The, all of the recycling, if you have not been up there lately, if you might buy, if you would like to go at any time, and when they're not, there are a lot of people, you get other application over there. The building is locked, it's secured now, because there's a lot of furniture that's in there, and all the work that's going on. We can, if you want to do a group walkthrough, or if you're individually wanting to, just let me know.
I would love to do a group walkthrough.
Let me have a look.
Don't bother me. I want everyone to let us know. So that's not, I just need everybody else to.
You know, I just said thank you for this one.
We can't wait today, because we have the D C, you must go over there, get to even, but, if I was scheduled with Thursday?
Well, I do have Thursday, but I don't have to be there, because that's the whole thing, if the ones that can't be there today, you know.
Thursday, what's that, Thursday?
Afternoon, this.
If you want to go, the horses are not there, which is easier to do if the horses are not there, they usually, or they usually go at three, five o'clock. You want to do that?
Five is fine.
That's all I have to say.
Do you think there's any questions?
I have a question about ordinance. Do we have an ordinance to get to buying traction and debris in those?
Right now, there is a fire plan that is called a statewide plan, and in order to have an open barn at any time, they have to contact the fire department for it. As far as, it's not a party, of course, the fire ordinance, I would have to look at that and see.
I see. Burn, burn man, May first, October, yeah, by that, it's on a inside city, it's some block of that, people run track, and you know, it's like a nineteen piece.
Yeah, it should be very busy, though.
All right. At least on, I talked to your, I think another day says, if I'm a little store, she was just asking if any, I guess it's traction about a little store, and then, I guess, it said that traction's trying to fall, and I was, I told her I wouldn't mind.
Probably the same lady contacted me, and I got in touch with Sue Taylor, and asked them to make sure that they're glad to be touched, remember, they, because they were, they were doing some remodels, so they had a large, so they, I'll make sure that it's, if they have it, we can, I'll contact them.
Anything else? All right. City attorney report?
Oh, hey, they, I was going to bring up the, 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 about the variance application on that, so, other than, I don't really.
All right. Any questions for the city attorney? All right. Mayor's report.
I wanted to start out, I talked to, I was opposed at the start, right, that we were getting ready to start the meeting, I got this week's update from, they joined the Department of Public Health, Amber Erickson, who is the epidemiologist in our district, and she said, good evening, in fact, if you will find an operational summary for this week. All thirteen counties are at a very high rate spread at the mall. Please encourage folks to take precautions. If you have respiratory symptoms right now, it may be good, it's a good practice to assume you have, and stay home. Get vaccinated, and encourage others to get vaccinated as well. Can't stress enough the importance of getting vaccinated. There are some who are too young, who can't, and some who are, you know, compromised, who can't. If you need to discuss it with your doctor first, follow one of those categories, please do, but please consider getting vaccinated. There's another slide the Department of Public Health is now putting out, and I think it's pretty informative about the vaccines. In Georgia, there are four million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-two fully vaccinated. That's from January first through August tenth. Four million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-two fully vaccinated. Of those, thirteen thousand, three hundred thirty-two have tested positive. That's point zero, zero, three percent of the total number of vaccinated that tested positive. A hundred and ninety-eight have been hospitalized. I can't even read all the zeros. Point zero, 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 four percent of those vaccinated have been hospitalized. A hundred and five have died. That's point zero, 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 two percent of those vaccinated. So, no, it's not a hundred percent, nothing's a hundred percent, but being vaccinated is the best advantage we have with this virus, and we seem to encourage people, any chance we get, to get vaccinated, wear the mask, whether you're vaccinated or not, because you know that if you're, even if you're vaccinated, you still potentially can get it in spread. So it's important that we all do the right things, we do the right things all the time until we can, until we can get a handle on this thing. But if you remember last year, we were talking about moderate spread and substantial spread. They're down to a new category, I guess, or maybe we were not talking, some, we were not there last year, but very high spread, and that's above substantial. So our whole district is in very high spread. It's stressing the hospitals. I watched today as the CEOs of major hospitals in our area plead, pleaded for people, please get vaccinated. They said, you know, people brought us water and food last year, and prayed for us, and took care of our folks. This year, we're asking to get vaccinated. That's the, that's the thing. So anyway, I'm preaching to the fire here, but maybe if somebody's watching, if somebody needs to hear that, please consider getting vaccinated. Let's see. Pretty preaching. So, Georgia Municipal Association, we had a great conference, I guess it's weekend before last now, a lot of good classes. I'm honored that I was sworn in as a member of the board of directors for Georgia Municipal Association, that's by virtue of my position on the district, district first vice president, and I'm looking forward to serving in that capacity and representing the city of Forsyth in that role. September twenty-sixth, we talked about two P M, doing the open house, or whatever, for the new city hall, and hopefully, the COVID stuff will be in a better situation by then. Did, get a chance, it was just quite coincidental, Councilman Hewitt and I were sitting in the lobby, waiting to leave the hotel, the E M A, and the governor walked in from the door, and he was just sitting there. Came right towards us, and so in our conversation, I mentioned, of course, he doesn't remember that, but that he was receiving invitation, and we helped him to tell him, so. Also, last week, Councilman Marx and I had the regional commission dinner, sat with Ms. Rita Davis, who has sent the warrants represented for this area, and we made sure that she knew that they were provided as well, and I think they've received an invitation, and we'll be, if they haven't already, both of our senators are our colleagues, and she seemed interested in potentially coming. That's all I have, unless somebody has questions to do. All right. Next on the agenda is additional business. Is there any additional business that has not yet been done? Do you think, Council?
I think G M A was good. Like I said, learned some good things, and, you know, best new people, so I think G M A was good, I always get a lot out of it. That's all I have.
All right. Anybody else?
In Georgia, you like?
We missed it.
We missed. I appreciate that.
Let's see. Any, any other additional business? If none, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone in the public wishing to come before council, maybe just up to four minutes, on any topic you would like to address, please state your name and address, or the rest. Anyone wishing to participate in public comment. All right. If there's no interest, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is executive session, about their need for one, and their need to charge. All right. Do they make it out of here another?
I'm going to motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll do it, I said.
I did learn a G M A flagship, I took, if you approve the agenda, this is part of our control. You do not have to make a motion to adjourn. The German is on the agenda.
This is a bank end up.
You can try to make a motion. Or second. To adjourn.
There's no discussion on the motion to adjourn, if you did want to. So anyway, you go with that. So that being said, that's from U F A Russia, but Councilman Goozey came along today. Let's say to her.
Oh, I understand.
All right.